Personnel matters again on August 27 for personnel matters and again this evening, Ray Friar will be speaking for personnel matters. With that being said, Randy, would you be so kind as to go over the fellow meeting and virtual meeting rules before we get started?
Sure. All meetings are electronically recorded. Participants' names will not be displayed during the meeting. All participants will be required to mute their microphones when they are participating in dialogue. If a participant wants courtesy of the floor or would like to make public comment or has questions on a specific topic, they must type their name and address into the chat feature. The meeting facilitator will identify and call on the individual requesting to speak. If someone is participating via phone, there will be an opportunity to ask questions once the individual has unmuted the microphone and identified themselves with their name and address. If someone has requested courtesy of the floor prior to the meeting via email, the facilitator will identify and call on that individual who has requested courtesy of the floor. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. These rules have been established to ensure professional meeting environment.
Thank you, Randy. All right, I think before we get started this evening, we're going to go a little bit out of order. I asked Randy to just provide a brief update on the storm and the township's work being done towards that. So Randy, would you just be so kind as to share some information on the storm?
Sure, we'd be happy to. A quick special thanks to our emergency management response team for holding multiple meetings with all of our field units involved in managing this storm. The communication efforts have been second to none and everyone is on the same page. There are multiple roads already flooded and closed throughout the township. Please do not drive through flooded roadways. I can't stress this enough. It seems to happen every time, no matter how many times you say it, but do not drive through flooded roadways. Please take this storm seriously. We already are and will continue to experience significant flooding throughout the night and early morning hours throughout our township. Road closures are currently being updated on the township website, the police Facebook page, and our Nextdoor app, so please stay tuned in to those outlets for any updates. Cover Bridge Park is currently closed and will likely be closed tomorrow as well. It's no secret there will be a significant cleanup in the park as we've seen in past storms. Our emergency operations center has been open since 3:00 p.m. this afternoon and its main focus is to help coordinate operations with field crews handling the storm. Our police, fire, and public works departments are staffed around the clock until the storm passes and cleanup efforts are finalized. I have been in contact with waste management and there is no anticipated delays currently for trash collections, so you can just put your trash out tonight if it's not going to float away. Again, there is one thing to remember with this storm and it is to take it seriously. Do not travel unless you actually have to. We want you to be safe and we want to ensure everyone there we have an amazing team of dedicated individuals that will get us through this storm.
Thanks, Randy. All right, we'll keep everybody up to date on any new changes on the website and on our social media apps as Randy had mentioned. So first on the agenda this evening for consideration and possible action, we have our August 18 Board of Commissioner meeting minutes. The fellow board has those meeting minutes. Were there any questions or comments on the August 18 Board of Commissioner meeting minutes? Commissioner Morgan, I'd like to make a motion to table the minutes. There were some statements that I personally made that I read, actually excerpts from the board's report, with specific terms that I feel would be important to include in the minutes, so I'd like to table them. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Michelle?
I'm not sure I understand the point of that.
So yeah, I think what we should do though is understand what those changes are. You don't have to share them right now, but share them, you know, with Tracy and Randy and then she can pass them on to the rest of the board. All right, no problem.
I have a comment. I meant her. I also have at least one item that has not been included in the report, which I would like to have included. So I think what I'm saying is by leaving this up now, what should we do to submit our changes?
Then Tracy and Randy, if we go over them, bring it back to the board for a vote after the next meeting.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so we will, I guess we should make a motion to table the meetings. Table the August 18, 2021 meeting minutes. We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second? Second from Commissioner Sutton. That will follow up, please, Randy.
Commissioner Walk, aye. Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Walk or, or, sorry.
Yes, motion carries. All right, we have no presentations this evening. We do have one ordinance for consideration and possible action. Can I have your change app here? Randy Ferrera to join us. All right, so this evening for consideration and possible action, we have a public hearing. This is an ordinance amending the Southway Mall Township's zoning ordinance to delete section 350-48 and 9E6. So Dave, would you like to start?
Yes, I will give a brief introduction. So Lanskin Equities, the applicant, went to the planning commission in December of 2020. They requested a section of the motor vehicle service facility use schedule be removed. The specific section to be removed was gas stations within 1,500 feet of another facility. At that meeting, the planning commission discussed it and came up with the recommendation to allow motor service facilities within 1,500 feet as long as they're separated by a road. So the idea was you could have them as long as they're on the opposite side. So that's kind of the gist of it, and with that, I will lead it up to the applicant to.
Good. We'll see.
Good evening. Airshot from Fitzpatrick, Lindsay Lula, and Representative, the applicant. We have prior to this public hearing been before the board a couple of times, so some of this will be repetitive, but I think it'll make the most sense if I start from the beginning so that the story is complete. The applicant is a property owner in the township. Your ordinance and the municipality's planning code permit a person that is a property owner to propose a change to the zoning ordinance. As was stated, we originally proposed a change that would have removed the 15-foot, 100-foot separation distance requirement between service stations. That was the original request. That was, I'll say, to get the mall rolling and open up the dialogue. As was stated, when we went to the planning commission, there was requested changes, and those changes were agreed to in their entirety. So exactly what the planning commission ends is exactly what the applicant provides the proposed amendment to say. That was reviewed by your staff, and what that does is it makes for a exception to the limitation, but it is significantly less of a change to the ordinance than we had proposed originally. And that was because we had no idea what the township had in mind. Would they want to remove it entirely? Would they not want to remove it? Would they want to do something in between? And as we found out, the planning commission's thought was, hey, let's do something in between that makes sense. So where we are today then is that you can, under the proposed amendment, have one service station within that 1,500-foot restriction so long as, that you be separated by the road of higher classification. So what you would end up with is, you know, what we all probably see in our daily travels, which is a lot of four corners at intersections that are commercial, because remember, this has no impact on a residential zoning district or anything of that sort, because the underlying gasoline service station isn't permitted in many of the districts to begin with. So what it turns out to be is that at intersections, you'll end up possibly with there being two service stations. And I know when I drive through the Lehigh Valley and elsewhere, it is not uncommon that major commercial intersections will have a, you know, along a highway will have a gas station on one side, a gas station the other. When I'm going north, I go to one. When I'm going south, I can go to the other. The fourth corner will often be, for example, a fast food restaurant or something. And not that that has to happen, but we all know it's a fairly common situation. So we've, last time, when we were asking for this to be advertised, a couple of times I said, we'll be glad to go in more detail at the public hearing, because that's what the hearing is for. So I think you probably know what a lot of our answers are going to be to the question, but I think there were two primary questions that might have come up that maybe people were looking for a little bit more information on. So with that, I'd like to ask the engineer who is on the right-hand side, and then I'll ask Mr. Spiegel to address those two questions specifically that had come up, just so we can assure the board that we've done our due diligence. Now, remember, we presented the same information to the planning commission and got a nearly unanimous favorable recommendation with the changes. We've made those exact changes. We're not asking for anything different, but I do want to ask Mr. Bevan a couple of questions. Randy, are you the one who changes that?
I'm Sarah McKinnon.
Okay.
Can you tell me which one you want to?
Yeah, so if you can go to the first map that Bowler prepared, which has all the circles on, and that's in the packet where it told me that he said you should be able to find that. And I said, there's now two, but I just want to show the first one, what we added.
I'm going to stop.
Yeah, keep going, keep going, a little bit more. Oh, slow down, the piece of stuff's up. Okay, no, what is the next one after this?
Next.
Oh, it's one after, actually. We'll come back to that one. Okay, perfect. So introduce yourself and then just explain your role in the project and the brief background.
I'm Jeff Bevan with Bowler Engineering. I'm a real estate developer engineer on a project. I'm prepared with this zoning exhibit plan.
Jeff, can you just stand right in front of the mic?
Yes.
Excellent. And did you guys, can you guys all hear? All right, thank you.
Okay, so Jeff, this first exhibit is one that we submitted when we first made the request for the text amendment to the ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and can you explain to the board what this depicted, so we can show how you then took that one step further?
Yes, so there are two primary items shown on this plan. The first, the outlines in blue, are setback restrictions from any public primary or secondary school, library, or hospital. And we identify the different locations in the township. And then the outlines in red are the 1,500-foot restrictions from any existing service stations.
Okay, and the reason you did that is because there is a section of the ordinance that has a distance separating requirement from things other than another gasoline station, correct?
That's correct.
And that section is not proposed for any change.
Correct.
And that was the planning commission's recommendation, and the ordinance provides that it stays the same. Second, can you tell the board, was one of the purposes of your preparation of this when we made the initial submission, was it to show there actually are a couple of instances where there are service stations within that restriction, albeit they're pre-existing, but it does exist, and to our knowledge, without concern?
That's correct. Yeah, there are several locations in the township where they're within 1,500 feet of each other or within 500 feet of a school or hospital. The primary location for the service stations are on Cedar Crest Boulevard, just north of 22, where they're separated by about 950 to 1,000 feet.
Okay, and can you now go to the similar exhibit that should be later on in the packet that has some extra verbiage on, because that's going to address one of the questions that was raised?
Is it another visual or?
It should be a visual that's identical to the, like, Gray City adding into the back of this.
This one here?
No. I emailed him something, he was going to add them in.
Is it on the flash drive?
Do you have it on the flash drive? Oh, maybe some. You put it on the flash drive?
I have the flash drive files up here.
Oh, yeah, it's called Impact Analysis? That's what the label in mine said it's on.
It should be. If possibly, but it was around the package.
Oh, okay.
That was the last page of the pack.
Okay.
The previous exhibit. Yeah, the only two graphics on screen, and for three graphics is the plan. This one here with the circles, which looks like it's the site, and the previous one over.
Okay. Because I did, he did tell me he was putting it on screen. If not, I've got a few paper copies and I'll hand those out, and you may need to share it. I was relying on the technology. No problem, I'm not faulting him, trust me. I'm the first one who should never criticize anyone when it comes to those kinds of things because they're horrible, but. Yeah. Yeah. Sure. I've got three 11-by-17s that I can't do anymore. I do have a mini 10 by 11. Okay. Because I believe we had a question from one of the commissioners, which was, can you have an idea what this would mean in terms of how many properties might be available? Did you analyze the entire township to be able to establish that?
We did. So what the exhibit shows that is handed out adds some additional properties identified in an agenta color, with the intention being to identify properties that could potentially be affected by this zoning amendment. And they were properties that were properly zoned for motor vehicle service station located within 1,500 feet of an existing service station. Outside of that, 500-foot restriction from schools, hospitals, libraries, and.
So is that, I'm just kidding. So is that map up there that's saying it's this one?
It's the same, except that's labeled along. I don't, maybe that doesn't, there should be verbiage at the bottom. Do you see what I mean?
Yes, okay. So maybe, I mean, if it's possible, you can kind of point it out on the screen, the same information, so the public can kind of get a feel for it.
Absolutely. Right, and then the last criteria was that it's separated by a public roadway as required by the text amendment. And so what we identified were several properties along Tillman Street in this location here that could potentially become gas stations but are previously, are currently developed. We identified a property up at 15th Street and 22 that is currently undeveloped and met the criteria. And then a few properties along Hamilton Boulevard and Cedar Crest Boulevard that met the criteria, of which one is a vacant site and one is a greenfield site. So what we found were really two greenfield sites and one vacant site that could potentially be redeveloped or developed as a gas station under this.
Okay, so in response to the question of, well, this opens us up to a proliferation, you're looking at, you found three sites in total beyond the one that obviously the applicant owns. And in one instance, if you developed one of the sites, would it eliminate another site?
Yes, it would. So Cedar Crest and Hamilton Boulevard, those roadways have the same classification under the township official map. And so development either across Cedar Crest Boulevard or south of Hamilton Boulevard would preclude development of another gas station anywhere within that. So at most, it could be one additional facility.
Okay, so in theory then, if the ordinance were amended as requested by the applicant, at most, that would mean potentially there might be another gap, land available for another gasoline service station on Cedar Crest and possibly one on 15th Street.
15th Street, correct.
Yeah, pardon. Okay, so in your analysis then, it certainly isn't, number one, you were able to determine what properties could be affected. Do you believe you did that accurately?
Believe so, yes.
Okay, and you were able to determine that it was not a significant amount. It was more than one, but not significant or significantly impactful to the township as a whole, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, last question or set of questions. For firm, do you do a significant amount of work for gasoline service station clients?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Other than a zoning ordinance that might have your restriction, have you ever had a project where the proximity of another gas station to your proposed gas station created a violation of any municipal, state, or federal rule? Unless the zoning restriction was in, there's no environmental rule or anything that would ever prevent two gas stations from being at opposite corners. Is that the case?
That's correct.
Okay, follow-up questions I can give to the engineer. If you want, I'll open it up for questions to the engineer if you would like, or I can ask Mr. Spiegel if I want to. I didn't finish.
I think you can leave since Mr. Bevan will sit there and ask the question. Are there any questions from the board?
I have questions, but I don't know what the next guy is going to say, so I'm going to have to ask now.
If you want me to move on, I'm glad to have Mr. Spiegel.
Well, can you tell us the background of the next person?
Yeah, the engineer. If you want to. Say who you are, and then I can tell you which is what that is.
Okay.
Yeah.
My name is Mike Spiegel. I'm a real estate project engineer at the Balla. My responsibility more or less is working with developers, work through the approval process in order to get our store ready for construction. And I'll work with constructions and insurance for it.
Okay, and Mr. Spiegel, you've been at these where you've listened to the other times we've appeared before, the planning commission and other commissioners, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and I think on prior occasions, you have said, or I have said, you would say that there was no restriction in rule, federal, state, industry guideline that covers this type of restriction, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, you did hear that question has come up a couple of times.
Yeah.
Okay, did you tell us the efforts you undertook to make sure that you've not, that you have uncovered every stone to ensure you have answered that question, correct?
Absolutely, so what I was looking to do, you can move to a couple of the next slides. What I looked into was to see what regulations, what federal and state entities require us to register our operations, and primarily the fuel operation side of our business, and understanding what it takes to basically put our fuel and sell our fuel. So one of the, if you can keep scrolling down, I think those were the ones left off. Okay. No, it's not a big deal. Yeah, so what I can mention is there are a few items here. For instance, that's made, labor and industry, we call L and I. That's made it requires us to apply for plantable combustible liquids, intent to install and intent to sell. And what we have to go through here is a lengthy application, which you may see in front of you, that has certain requirements to it. We have to list out what the type of our tanks are, location of the site. We have to meet certain obligations as to, are we going to have any kind of vapor retardants on the site? Who possibly will be doing the installation of our pumps and our tanks? So there's a variety of items we need to go through. Also, that's required is we have an installation of our, registration of our actual tanks. So our underground storage tanks, which are fiberglass, we don't do steel tanks anymore. That's in our opinion something that could open itself for corrosion. So our double-lined fiberglass tanks that we install, we have to register these with the Department of Environmental Protection, DEEP. And these tanks, all of our sites are registered with DEEP. It's an important aspect of our operation. It's also an important aspect of the process in order to be able to sell fuel, basically. There are other applications that come into play. For instance, back in 1988, the Environmental Protection Agency developed standards in which how to install and protect underground storage tanks from leaks. What we like to do and what we have done is we've considered that we've gone beyond those standards. For instance, our tanks, as I mentioned before, are double-lined. These tanks have certain systems that can detect, and this is not just at the store level, but also to our corporate office, that they can detect any leaks whatsoever. Now, in all the stores that we've completed, and we have a couple days ago, we're 920 stores in our chain, we have yet to have a leak in any of our underground storage tanks. So we pride ourselves on this, but we can't say that tomorrow something won't happen, which is the reason why we have certain precautions and certain levels of safety. One other aspect which some people don't realize is we actually have the IRS. People say, well, how is taxes involved with selling fuel? Well, the IRS actually has certain regulations that they monitor our levels of ultra-low sulfur standards that we have in our diesel that we sell. So the IRS also will be monitoring and inspecting our sites. So there's a variety of items here that, and a variety of applications, agencies that inspect, that perform the requirements, and they basically, you know, say this is everything you need to do in order to install and to operate a fuel station in this area that, and actually pretty much everywhere in the United States.
Okay, so now, in that regard, a couple of questions. Number one, with respect to your or any other gasoline station obtaining those permits, is there any inquiry made and do you need to supply any information relating to the location of the nearest other gasoline service station?
Sometimes there's information that's provided in the sense of what is around us, what operations are around us, what businesses are around us, but there's nothing that says, you know, are you within a certain distance from the gasoline?
Okay, and did you, I presume you don't individually complete all of these. You've got experts that you work with to assist in the completion?
Correct, yes.
In the course of making your investigation, so you could speak here tonight, did you speak with all the gentlemen or gentlewomen who are in charge of that and ask the same question, is there any restriction they're aware of that would prevent a gas station other than a zoning restriction that exists from being located within 1,500 feet? from being located within 1,500 feet?
Yes, I did. Several people, both within our fuel department at Wawa and also some of our partners that do some of the applications for us, and none of them have said that there is any regulations in any of the applications and through any of the regulatory agencies that have that part.
Do you have other facilities that are located within 1,500 feet of another gasoline service station?
We have several.
Okay. So do you then believe that if that were a restriction under some other regulation, that you would have been aware of that in the course of what you do in your job?
I would think that would apply.
Okay. So at the end of the day, was it a little bit like looking for a needle in a haystack? Because you're convinced that restriction doesn't exist other than by virtue of what I have called an outdated or a holdover, a carryover old zoning ordinance?
Yeah, I did a lot of research into areas, both local and also in other states that we work in. There is nothing that I've found, there's nothing that anybody did to provide that information for that regulation.
Okay, so does that lead you to the conclusion that there is not a safety for example, that ordinance couldn't have been designed because to be safe you need to be 1,500 feet? If it were a safety issue, one of these agencies would be regulating it.
I don't do that.
Okay. So that's all the questions I had for this, with this based upon what my question that we got last night. I think we covered it as best we could.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
Any questions from the board?
Yes. So for the previous gentleman, Mr. Spiegel. Thank you for providing some empirical information. And I emphasize empirical, I didn't hear anything as exact as I would like to see. I read the package before the presentation, and already specific ordinance. And my main question is, what's the rationale and the reason for this exception? The ordinance requires, you have to be at least 1,500 feet away. But this exception, like you had up on the screen, says, well, if there's a road, there's no separation distance. It just says that all you have to do is have a road there. So that's quite a difference, right? It's quite a difference to have a zoning ordinance where they standard that says 1,500 feet is required, but if you put it a road, there's zero separation distance required.
I didn't know that, sorry.
Yeah. I just, I just didn't understand the reason, the rationale for why that would be. So the notes I wrote, it admits that it can be less than 1,500 feet if you're on opposite sides of the road. But there's no specified minimum allowed separation distance for the exception case. It seems as ordinary, maybe 1,500 feet, here's a road, you don't need anything. It seems as ordinary to me. So I think this exception case, and I would say this to the township, if the township is gonna change an ordinance, rather than change it to an ordinance that says nothing about the required separation distance, there ought to be some number that we arrive at. And without such a specification, the separation distance could be, let's say, 100 feet, which is the distance between properties on the opposite side of the road. And in fact, your map shows your property is 100 feet away from the other property on the opposite side of the road. I think if I try to say the conclusion, I'd like to see something more definitive. I'd like the township to put a separation distance in and not just say, well, there's a road, it's nothing. And then, as far as the engineering goes, I appreciate all the empirical information. It's almost converse empirical information. I didn't find anything, therefore it must not exist. In engineering, it'd be a lot better to say, this, you know, this organization has this standard and it states right here, this is acceptable, as opposed to saying, nobody comments on this subject.
So I think it's two questions. So and I really challenge him and assist me if need be, but I guess my answer to your first question of why is there no distance would be a question, which is why is there a distance in the first place? I don't know why there's a distance in the first place, except it is a carryover from, as I explained before, ordinance of your without anyone explaining to us why there's a distance in the first place. So I suggest to you, what the planning commission did was probably came to the same conclusion I did, which is, we're not sure what, why there is that distance. And what we're gonna do is create a limited exception that turns the ordinance into something that is consistent with probably the majority of the other, of the rest of the civilized world. In that there are often gas stations located proximate to each other at, along commercial corridors. Again, this has to have the underlying zoning to allow that. To answer your second question, we can't make up a standard. So in other words, my, the question would be, did you find anyone who even said to you, we recommend 4,000 feet or we recommend 20 feet? I mean, no one recommends any distance between the stations, which is what you were trying to explain.
Yeah, I think they have to do a distance, is what I was looking for. Any kind of requirement for distance, we have regulations. You know, like I mentioned with our labor industry, there's certain, the allocation is a valid application. Nor are an application to the same, you know, proximity, you know, to an existing fuel station. So this is not written in there. And going through experts, going through the other regulations that cover us, there's nothing that came up that I saw, you know, there's nothing to show, basically.
If we could have found someone who wrote, you should be at least 50 feet apart, we wouldn't have brought that in. But you couldn't even find somebody that said, the property should have separation 50 feet. We tried. I don't think it is, I would defy someone else to find it because I would think your industry and the experts that interviewed us may be the best tasked to do that, but we are just not aware of it. And that's all we can tell you, is we couldn't find one that said they should be, if it said there should be a two inch separation, I mean, that's very helpful for us, but it just doesn't exist, so it's a problem. I understand your point, but that is the problem with trying to answer your question. We tried. Okay. You're welcome.
I don't have any actual questions, but I will just make a brief comment. So I am the new guy here. First of all, thank you for your presentation. Informative. I am the new guy here, but my comment would be, quite frankly, Shuck, that you actually have to go to this extent for a change such as this. That's just my personal opinion. You know, setting that aside, you know, it pays not much for standing here. It's good use of the land, it's a good project, most certainly I'm going to support it. And quite frankly, from the township perspective, I think we should make more of these adjustments, not less in support of reasonable, and if that makes sense to the township. That's my comments. You know, that's not a question, but again, thank you.
I have other questions, but not for these yet.
So basically, you know, with not having that distance that Commissioner Walcott mentioned, you weren't about to suggest an arbitrary number, because we're trying to get rid of an arbitrary number, is what you suggested.
Yeah. So I guess I would say that, in my mind, that the reason I proposed the ordinance the way I proposed it initially, if you recall, was to delete the separation business. Because I was unable to find a reasonable and rational basis for the separation after talking to the engineer, talking to, or a representative, people who are in the know as to, you know, I asked, when I started, I asked the question, is there any reason why it should be separated by any distance from another station? And they said, no, we've never had it other than a couple of instances where there are municipalities that may have. We have seen in a couple of instances this exists. I suspect they are, like I suggested, because they've been carryovers from a long time back. But I started off by saying, take the restriction out, because I don't even know why it exists in the first place. However, when we worked with the planning commission, I understood that when you look and, you know, sometimes you just don't want to go and take the huge leap and you say, hmm, okay, maybe there is something we're all missing here that says you shouldn't let four of them, you know, be like, what are those four states out west where the four quarters meet, that theoretically have four of them around that? I don't know. Maybe someone's concerned with that. But I was happy to say, look, you take it away from it, you can have one, and what you end up with is only opening it up to a couple of more properties where it could exist, yet in all candor, it serves the purpose of what my clients asked. So I was fighting a battle for the entire township. I lost it for the entire township, but I do think, you know, if the ordinance goes through, it makes sense for the few properties that are affected. I don't know. I just, I just didn't think we should pull out a whole cloth, a number, simply because it was smaller, when I didn't, I was not aware of a reason why the number should exist in the first place.
Because it was not safety related in any way.
I'm not aware of that. Yeah. I mean, we can't find, because you, again, you know, this is what we say, this isn't a great answer, but you would like to think if it was safety related, they wouldn't rely upon a few townships to pass the ordinance. And it was truly a safety, it's like EPA, L and I, some of them would create a standard. The federal government should regulate it. It truly is a safety standard.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a couple comments of question. With all due respect to Mr. Shuck and Commissioner Morgan, I don't think it's appropriate to call this 1,500 feet an arbitrarily standard. That's a subjective conclusion. There's some history behind the 1,500 foot requirement. I apparently, nobody has the exact history of why that exists. Okay, so you're all, you know, everybody who's worked on this has identified that. But it's there for a reason, and it would have been good if somebody could have found the histories since it's in our zoning ordinance. I don't think it was arbitrary. I don't think anything in any of our zoning ordinance or settlement is arbitrary. I think it was put there for some reason that was understood at the time it was put there. So I just wanted to make that assumption.
You know, I will say something, you know, I understand your point, but whenever I, for example, in any question, when someone says the answer is, but that's the way we've always done things, I don't always buy into that. So all I'm saying is, if no one can give me a reason why, and other than what is roughly, that's the way it's always been, I tend to blanch it at end push. And then, you know, it may be my nature, maybe I'm a monster here, having this discussion with you, but that's what's gonna happen every time.
I do believe that the way to get a reason for it was 53 years ago. By 30, 53 hundred years. I don't even know if we had current TV then. I'm not sure. Way, way too long. So we need to replace our, and be receptive to those changes. And again, no federal requirements, no state requirements. I see no reason for any requirements on the township. Thank you.
I have one other comment. I appreciate your investigating the township and coming up with these numbers of other property locations that might be impacted. I think I've said this at a previous meeting, so it's something like a highlight that we have a large section of the township that is undeveloped and you don't identify anything there based on the current zoning. There could be an impact there in the future.
Only if you resolve that problem. So all we can do is deal with your current zoning. So that's, I mean, but I think that happens with everything. Anything you do, I mean, you could do an entire overhaul of your zoning ordinance and the same question, right? Because we can always change that zone in the future. But we're dealing, in my opinion, the here and now. So our chart reflects what is the here and now. Those properties are the ones that are theoretically having restriction relaxed, and that's all we can do. We couldn't guess that you might take some of that green and maybe commercial, I don't know.
Right. Well, our role is to look at it for current citizens and future citizens and businesses. So I have one last question, and I know you're gonna tell me you had two options. I'm aware of that, and you spoke to that subject at the last meeting. Do you please explain, however, why didn't you go to this own hearing board and against her own power answer just this one property, as opposed to going through all the effort and coming here and asking the board to change his own ordinance for the impacted township?
I'll just refer to the minutes from last time. Okay, I will answer you again. And that is, a property owner has the right to elect their path, number one. Number two, the appropriate path, when you believe, as I knew and as I advised, my client in reliance upon the experts, that the ordinance doesn't seem to have a rational relationship with protecting the public health, safety, and welfare, is to request that that ordinance be amended. So I believe I was following the correct path when, sure, there are a couple of paths available. The applicant has the right to choose which one he wants. And for example, if this ordinance were not changed, I could file an application with the zoning board. If I go into the zoning board first and the zoning board denied it, I could be right where I am today doing the same thing. So my professional judgment was that when you are looking to change, to address an ordinance that you do not believe clearly supports the public health, safety, and welfare, meets that standard, and can be amended to be what I believe is a better ordinance, you choose that path. So it's my professional opinion that this was the appropriate path to pursue. But I had approval, certainly. I've said that before and it hasn't always worked out that way, but I've made my choice and said, I believe this is the appropriate way. I think that's a fairly similar answer to what I said last time. So I'm being consistent in my stubbornness with my answers, so.
Are there any electrical stations?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is a little action here, but I don't wanna answer this. What we try to do with our partners, primarily Tesla is the primary one. We try to designate spaces that if they choose this like a location, it's purely up to them based upon, you know, proximity to the major routes, traffic counts, so on and so forth. We don't have anything to say in it. They will come in and install it. I would say at all of our sites, we designate some spaces that could be used for e-decarbing. We enjoy having them because it adds customers to our store while providing an environmentally safe, you know, avenue for them. So for this particular site, I don't have an answer as to whether that's definitely gonna happen, but I know we would inquire with Tesla or our other vendors if that would be possible to come here.
Sounds good.
We anticipate, yes.
I have a different one to finish. I have some questions. Thank you for your presentation tonight. In reviewing the five locations where there were facilities that were within the 500 foot setback, so five of them were identified by the applicant. Four of them are grandfathered in. They were constructed prior to the dis-ordinance being enacted. So the one station which happens to be across the street from this proposed area was granted a special exception from the hearing board to, through variances, to construct their, the internet, so I guess I'm pretty jumping off of traditional rules. Statement that certainly as a developer and applicant, you have the right to come and ask the township to want to go forward with your project, to ask for changes so that you can construct the project as you see fit. To come before the board and ask for global change, the township is a very different thing. And I think what I heard you say tonight, there's no regulations if you find an EPA or whatnot that has to do with tanks. I look at this a little bit differently. This ordinance has been in effect for 53 years, and we've had one special exception to it. I personally feel that this has served the township well. As a design standard, this isn't about EPA. It's about not having gas stations or service stations littering our corridors. If you look at the landscape of Saltway Hall, it's a very different, unique community. It's charming. And to see this challenge now to want to change, to potentially have other areas change over, I don't know that personally that's something that is for. If we look to globally plan for the future, but township is something charming by this, that seems. seems appropriate. We are just finishing our comprehensive plan right now, getting ready to shortly do an update to our zoning. And certainly, I know, as a member of the planning commission, we've had several applicants come before us for very simple requests, but we had turned down all of them and put them to wait until the comp plan goes through because this board needs to look at the township as a whole from a design standpoint, as well as safety, health, and welfare, and make wise choices for all of our community, not just for a single developer, for a single property. So I wanted to, I guess, make that distinction that this isn't your only avenue to secretly to build your project. My second comment would be, you included a drawing of your proposed development, and I wanted to ask if, based on the submission that's here, are, are you going to be seeking waivers to the plan as presented to us? Does that meet our current saldo for the development that you're planning?
We haven't prepared subdivision land development plans yet. So I mean, theoretically, you know, we, we may, we would be in the same situation as we would with any other project, which is, we'll, we'll prepare a plan. You don't have a land development plan done. That would be premature.
Correct.
So we don't know that answer, but you, you got to start somewhere. And so a very expensive endeavor to prepare subdivision land develop, land development plans, and you wouldn't do that unless you knew your use could receive. I mean, just it's, it would be, it's, it would, it would be imprudent, I think, from a business sense to get too far ahead of yourself.
Thank you. And one other question. There was a note that this plan had been sent to the planning commission in July on the 19th. Do we have?
We do. We followed up with them this morning, and they emailed us a copy. The, "This minor proposal is not a matter of regional concern and exhibits consistency with future LV."
Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
That's all the questions I have.
And the only comment I would make in response to one of your comments was, I, you, I would suggest that you recall, these are mainly commercial districts. So for example, the same district that allows a service station allows fast food restaurants and all of those uses. So I'm not sure making this distinction of it will, it, it's detrimental to the township if the second gas station goes in when that same property could be used for, you know, fast food restaurant and other significant commercial use. I guess I, I wouldn't balance that. I would say, don't judge the gas station as being any better or worse than a comparable commercial use that could be on that corner. I, I, I'm not sure I understand that distinction.
Well, I didn't use the word that. Shemal, this actually has nothing to do with Wawa or, or the medical building on the site. It has more to do with the design standards of the township and your ability to go to the zoning hearing board to secretly have a single property, you know, to be considered that way as opposed to this board making a global change throughout the township, personally.
But I thought you said, you thought it made sense, I thought you, I pardon if I misunderstood. I thought one of your statements was, I think the reason was to not have the township have gas stations so close to each other. And my only question was, I'm not sure why that's significantly different than if the property across the street could have many other types of significant commercial use on it. I just don't under, I just didn't understand that.
Well, just to clarify, for 53 years, it's been a design standard in Southway Hall, and it's a very charming community that is very attractive to people to come and live in. And I am very happy for the design standards that we have in place.
Right, and I'm saying, I, I just didn't understand why the design standard that not like any gas, swing service station across from another one was, was such an improvement over not adding a fast food restaurant on that opposite corner. I just said I didn't understand that.
Thank you.
Southway Hall being charming in place, there is, I don't think we all know it, but it is growing and we need services to accommodate the growth. That's just one.
If I could just make a brief comment, because I don't want to break your point. You want to write, I respect everyone's time, I know they're here for other reasons, but just from a global perspective, people seem to keep coming up, not even just with this product, but others, about other avenues that developers should be taking. From my perspective as the commissioner, it's not my job, it shouldn't be my job to develop, to help developers with the ways they should be going about doing something. The fact that main, that document remained vacant for quite a bit of times, someone else had bought into something once, what they wanted to do with it, you know? So I think, from my perspective, it would be you and us to continue to work with developers. You move the township forward, as that, as that happens, as Commissioner Seton rightly pointed out, services are going to be needed to fill people's needs. Everyone needs gas for their car. And so, again, I think philosophically, I just, just want to make the point that I disagree with that going forward. I hope we're a little bit more open minded than that.
Okay, I, I have a comment, which goes directly to Commissioner Walmsley. As commissioners, we have to govern based on the interest of all the citizens throughout the entire township and not just one land development applicant. That's my view.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? At this time, you would have to open it to follow up on your questions. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Any in chat?
Nothing in the chat. Oh, wait. There is something in the chat.
They would have to give their name and address.
Yep. So we're not really equipped to take verbal comment, so I will read the comment.
Do they have their names and addresses?
Yes. Monica Hajis, 1707, Penns Crossing. "While I respect the applicant's request to go forward changing the ordinance in its entirety, I do believe it should be done on a single situational basis. We are in the middle of updating our comp plan, and the entire plan should be completed, so the full picture is clear. This ordinance should be revisited, but it, should be revisited, but at this time, I believe it should be done as a variance and not changed townshipwide. The applicant should focus on their project rather than change the ordinance in its entirety. I understand we want to accommodate growth, but then why is the old Luke Oil Station near the McDonald's on Cedar Crest and Tillman vacant if there is such a demand?" Thank you.
So it sounds to me that it's more the same than the question. Is there any, any other questions or comments?
That's all I have.
There was a hearing at this time. So at this point then, we're closing the hearing for any further comments or questions, and would be open for a vote to move forward with the opportunity to amend the ordinance to delete sections 350, 48, and 9E6. So do I hear said motion for ordinance amendment? Do you have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Long? Do I hear a second? Do you have a second from Commissioner Seton? Have a whole call vote, please, Randy.
Commissioner Walmsley?
No.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
No.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, for your attention.
Thanks for your time.
All right. Next this evening for consideration and possible action of a variety of resolutions. The first resolution is a resolution granting a waiver of circular review and approval requirements to Southway Mall Township subdivision and land development ordinance for our plan entitled 3810 and 3830, Uplberry Road. Mr. Manwar.
Good evening, everybody.
We can give a brief introduction, although I believe the engineer representing this project is on the other meeting. Trouble appearing. So we'll go ahead and go through this and you can put some information into that. This is an application to adjust common property line between 3810, Uplberry Road, and 3830. I have the purpose to transfer approximately six tenths of an acre of property from 3830 to 3810. The subject property is owned by our residential, player named Stanley Staley, restated trust slash Judith Pocason is the owner. Michael is the successor, Gopesh D N F. The background of this application is at the 2000, July meeting of 2000, the board commissioners approved the resolution 2000 dash 30, this degree subsequent. While all the conditions of the approval for the plan were met, the plan was never reported. The property owner recently passed away, and the state has expressed an interest in completing the lot line adjustment. The estate has withdrawn the 1990 plan, 1999 plan, and submitted an updated plan to address the newer requirements. The, as far as reviewing comments, there are some waivers associated with it. We received a letter from Mr. Talarida regarding those waiver requests yesterday after him, and may or may not have gotten on board docs. So Tony's here, he can kind of review that. But the community development department does recommend the approval. With that, I will, is there anybody here for this? Let me see it, Ray, or Mark has anything on the chat.
Tony, do you want to go over the, the letter?
Yes, we had an original review letter dated August 13th. It was a list of items that I did on plans not addressed. It was a plan that was originally reviewed upon a previous ordinance back in 1999. Similar plan was submitted, did not include a list of items that are now required. A, at that time, it went August 13th, we did not recommend approval because they were not addressed. We received a paper letter dated August 26th from the applicant requesting waivers for five sections of the ordinance. With these waiver requests, we have no engineering objections, right? Objections to these, I can go through each section. It's 31223B15, and as requiring topographic comps course. The waivers requested of this plan, we have no engineering objection. It is a hot line adjustment, there is no issue with that in comp course. 31223B18 requiring the origin showing water courses relevant by the water plant, trees, other features. We have no engineering objection. Again, we ask that it don't be added to the plan stating that none of these features are within the property. If you value it, no engineering objection, we do not see that, but we want the engineers certified to that. Section 31223B22 requiring sole touches to be added to the plan. This is an item that we have no engineering objection, we do not see since there's a lot on adjustment, so it appears to be not applicable to development or such as proposed. And then the remaining sections, 31226A and 31235B, frontage improvements along Uplberry Road, right away deemed by curbs, sidewalks, tree trees, mottos, with the curls requested. We do not have engineering objection, but defer to the pleasure of the board if they choose at this time to add sidewalks curving to the section of road. With those requests, and we spot that information, depending on any approvals of the board, those waivers are granted, waivers given, and the curls are granted, we could be in a position to amend that.
Thanks, Randy. Are there any?
I'm not getting anything from Mark. Mark, there's a bubble in the chat where you can type some comments and I can read them.
Okay.
We can't use this sound through the meeting because it causes feedback.
Oh, geez, okay.
So hopefully you can figure out how to use the chat.
Give him a second. Well, he's, well, he's coming to, are there any questions or comments for the information provided by Dave and or Tony?
I have one question, Tony. Your original engineering letter dated August 8th, you were not recommending approval at that time. Is the reason only because of the waivers or were there other?
No, that's, that's correct. I mean, you're correct, Commissioner, you're correct. There was no addressing of those items, no, it's a list of items that they did not have. If waivers are granted, then I would consider those items addressed. If they are not, if none of the waivers are applied upon, prove that I would say that they should provide all of the stagnation on a revision.
Anything?
Mark has no comments.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? Any from the public? In the chat?
No, not yet.
That being said, we're giving a motion this evening to move forward bringing a waiver of certain review and approval requirements for the subdivision land development ordinance for plan entitled 3810, 3830, Uplberry Road. I would make that motion, adding a note to, as Tony mentioned, the approval for waivers and the referral to the side. It's a referral on the side, it's not a waiver. So if they do develop the property later, you have to agree to pass it. Wasn't it already a referral?
That's correct. It was a referral, excuse me, it was a referral, frontage improvement.
It was already a referral. It wasn't. Yeah, so we don't need to change it. All right. So it would be as, as it stands? Not, it would be in notice date?
That would be correct, as the letter stands.
Okay. So your motion stands without a, well, a note to comply with the waivers as to, I don't have your letter, so how do we need to word that? To comply with your engineering letter, we have to, yeah, that's, that's not in our packet, it's not on. When you read it, you said it was like a note.
That's correct. So this letter, I would, this may be your question, but I think that the resolution would say the August 13th and then subsequent August 31st letter, waiver for a letter, that makes sense? Good job, Stephen.
So if we, it was an August 31st letter, so you're referencing the 31st letter?
That's correct. The waiver, the waiver letter came out the 26th, and we respond with 31st to what Dave said, it may or may not have been added to the packet. I guess, permission codes, it was not added to the packet, so I would suggest it would be added to the resolution to comply with not only our August 13th letter, but then we read the letter of August 13th.
All right, there it is. All right. That is the motion. So we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. And we got a second from Commissioner Seton. Can I roll call vote, please, Randy?
Commissioner Walmsley?
Hi.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes. I'll let, I'll let you guys figure out the wording for that one. Thank you. All right. Next this evening for consideration of possible action, we have a resolution extending a conditional final approval granted to a major subdivision entitled Hotel Hamilton.
So again, I'll give a brief introduction. This is for an extension to the Hotel Hamilton approval. I'm sure we're familiar with it. It's at the corner of Hamilton Boulevard and Cedar Crest where the King George Business. The applicant was last here at the May 5th, 2021 meeting. He granted a four-month extension at that time. The applicant is now requesting an additional six-month extension. So with that, I will leave it to the applicant. So with that, I will leave it to the applicant to discuss the request for extension.
Thank you, thank you. I enjoy the surroundings, although I park with rocks in the building.
Oh, I would like to park with rocks in the building.
I apologize actually for being here tonight. When I was here earlier this year, you know, we thought we had everything wrapped up at this point in time. We didn't at that time, anticipate that we'd still be dealing COVID, we'd still be dealing with state offices not being back, and not being able to get meetings with the state. We have most of the items resolved on these plans. We're working out the final details with township right now, and we are trying to finalize things with PennDOT. I think we're pretty close with them, but we've not yet finished with them. So we still have outstanding issues with getting our highway out of the supremacy, but we think we have all the major issues resolved. You know, I think we're at a point that we're going to provide a cull but across the property, PennDOT eventually. Put a new cull but across Cedar Crest Boulevard, we're just working out the details of that right now. So we need a few more months to be able to get the things finalized with PennDOT. Hopefully we get finished with COVID, we can get meetings, we can get things done.
So I'm going to make a suggestion. We had done this before when we asked for like one of the earlier extensions. If, if the board is so willing to monitor this request for an extension, I really do think we should go back to the original plan and put some parameters around checking in, like in, depending on how much time you're looking for an extension every three months, whatever it might be. I think we need to have some report out to find out where we stand on this project because it's been a long, long, long time. And I think it's really important to keep the ball rolling, that the board gets updated periodically, and staff does for that matter, on the status of the project. And it will keep everybody on their toes to make sure it gets done in time and fashion. So that, that would be my suggestion. I would kind of defer to you, Dave, on, on what parameters we should set up, if that's something that everybody agrees. I think that's the best way to move forward if the board is so willing to allow.
I believe at the last extension, or one of the extensions, it was a one-year extension, and we requested updates every six, midway, so six month.
What's the extension request on this one?
Six months. So you were doing three months, or you have three months to judge?
I would say two months.
Two months is viable.
And see significant actions so we can get to that final point. That would be my suggestion, and I mean ultimately it's a decision of this full board. But I think to keep the ball rolling and keep everybody updated on what the status is of the project, I think that's the best thing.
We'll lie with that, believe.
No, no, no. He's, he's looking for a six-month extension every two months. We've had done this prior, you, I don't, you guys aren't on the board yet. They had provided updates to us on the status of the project, and so we would be aware of what was going on. Yeah.
Are you sure that six months is enough? I hope so, Joe, but you know, with PennDOT these days, it's like, you just have trouble getting, you just have trouble getting meetings and getting things resolved. Early on, we were able to have a common meeting with township and PennDOT. In fact, they came over here for a meeting, but these days you just can't get that accomplished. I don't go along with that as long as some of this, that eight, two months to come over and deal with it.
Well, that would be a requirement for the extension.
Mr. Seton, I think I compared the application for the extension, I thought I asked three months.
Okay, good. Pardon? You asked three months?
I thought you said six months. What is it? Six, three?
Bill did, Bill did the application request, would you ask?
I, in our memo, we have six, but I can look.
I have to turn to you now, signed by Mr. Patel, asking for six months.
Six months, okay.
Yes, sir.
Maybe I was, maybe, oh, what? Sorry.
I think, yeah, I agree with Commissioner Kelly. I think we should stay with six, then go with the two-month updates to provide to Dave and then he can feed back to, and Randy and feed back to, or feed back to the commissioners.
Hopefully I can go and remember and say, hey, we got a PennDOT.
Wouldn't that be awesome?
That would be fantastic.
So are there any other questions or comments from this board on their request for an extension? Any from the public?
Do I have to hear first, Patel?
Sure, if you have more information to provide, that would be awesome. Mr. Patel?
I'm sorry.
Welcome.
Probably. It's a good idea, it's a good plan.
Yeah, okay.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, okay.
His mother.
Question, is there any change in the plans?
No, there's no change in the plan.
What are you going to build there?
It is, as it says, bank, brush to wear that hotel.
All right, and you spent a lot of money with respect to this project, have you not?
Yes.
How much have you spent just to save the King George Inn?
It's around $1,000, $200,000.
Just to save the King George Inn?
And every time we're moving all of the parts which get life.
And finally, how much did you spend on the project generally?
Generally, it's a $1.000,000.
That's on, that's on cost of length.
Engineering, legal, and.
And that's also cost of length, that's just the movement forward before the township. Still more to go.
Yes. For just one D O E comes away, that's.
No, no doubt, you have spent an enormous amount of time and energy on this project, and we definitely recognize that. And for me, I'll just share with you, my request to have those updates every two months isn't because we're questioning that you're doing work. It's more so that as we get questions from the public, or even during, you know, keeping things up to, up to speed with staff, we want to make sure that we can send out accurate information. And I think that would be helpful to all the parties involved.
Right. And just, I'll, just a quick comment about the project itself. Again, I've, we asked past history, just out of curiosity, I recall some conversation. What, what's the reason the King George Inn is still there?
He, he, originally, I think you have.
And he has demolition permit during the construction.
And then the public came forward and they said, save the King George Inn, and he responded to that. There were a lot of people who said, save the King George Inn. But he had demolition permit, he could have knocked it down.
We appreciate the second of it.
And I'm glad you asked that question because it's very helpful.
The damage is a bit of a flooding issue, right? It was in the past, but no more. The reasoning is because the way it was, the restaurant was developed from the restaurant, kitchen side and all that, the water was flowing. When we demolished that kitchen area and the facility, we already poured the concrete in there. And also because of D O E, we have already poured the concrete into the well, so everything is safe.
I appreciate your emphasis.
Yeah, what, what the tools say, it's building itself no longer is taking in water. Is there, you still have the flooding in Cedar Crest Boulevard, because you have those two, you have two small PennDOT heights, the two pipe across Cedar Crest Boulevard. The cull but that Mr. Plouls is going to put, Mr. Patel's going to put across the property, it would be 14-foot wide by five-foot high cull but across the whole length of the property, take that water down through this. And then eventually PennDOTs would extend that cull but across Cedar Crest Boulevard. In the meantime, it's going to collect the water, got with it, and running out along that, as it does now, and carry across the site.
Overall, this will be an improvement for the township.
Very much so. Eventually, with the cooperation of PennDOT, which the township was very much a participant in leading with that and getting them to agree to that once we put the cull but in, then it'll fix in their cull. And then we'll get rid of the flooding problem on Cedar Crest Boulevard.
I appreciate all your efforts and look forward to the project itself. I personally don't see a historical value of the King George Inn, but.
It was very critical. I think.
That's my opinion.
I think it was a complicated process.
I had a couple interesting nights there, you know, nothing, nothing.
So are there any other questions from the board on this particular request for an extension? Any from the public? Any in chat?
Nope.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for coming tonight. That being said, with no questions, do I hear a motion to move forward with the extension of a six-month extension for the Hotel Hamilton project with the two-month interval of reports provided to Dave and Randy, full feedback to the board? We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly, give her a second. I'll make a second, second from Commissioner Morgan, can I roll call, please, Randy?
Commissioner Walken?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, motion carries. Gentlemen, thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Yep.
I can't help but say, this is like, this is rough. Sometime when you have the time, tell you how it's done here.
Oh.
I've been very involved since.
I would love to hear it, absolutely.
Sometime when you have the time, just ask me.
I love it.
I'll ask you specifically, the negotiation with the Church of Rock Creek, how you moved the road for the ladies of the church and stuff, and all of this, and I was very much involved.
We'd love to hear it sometime, thank you. All right. Take care.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. All right. We have some extremely patient men and women with us this evening waiting back there. Next on our agenda for consideration and possible action, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Southwaymont Township, Lee High County Council, Kenny Rendell Co., as intern township manager, and increasing the base compensation for the interim township manager. So I will introduce this. This would be the interim role of township manager as our previous township manager Renee Vickel has moved on. And Randy has so willingly agreed to take on this interim role, which for that we are very grateful. We have no doubt that he is an amazing individual in this role, and we would support him greatly. So if there weren't any questions or comments on this particular resolution for this evening, I would entertain a motion for approval, but I will open it up to any questions or comments from the board first. Is there any?
I have a couple of comments. I support Randy, I told him privately prior to this meeting. I look at where the township is right now, and I think we're in a critical transition period, not just through the having an interim township manager, but, you know, many other factors. So I, I think it's important for the B O C and the interim township manager to have excellent communication, especially since we're moving into new responsibilities, which are, you know, lot more than his manager of operations. And we're going to have a transition with the Board of Commissioners as well shortly. We're going to have a different composition of the board in four months. Commissioner Kelly and I are, you know, these two commissioners who will remain to finish our terms after January 1st of 2022. So I think it's essential that we have excellent communication during the next four-month transition period. So I'm going to float a suggestion that we talked about several months ago at this Board of Commissioner meeting. I'm going to suggest that we have our new interim township manager provide written weekly reports to the Board of Commissioners about the conduct of the township affairs in accordance with Chapter 50-7. What previously was voted down, honestly, I think at this point in time, this critical juncture and transition period we have will be a great idea so that the full board is fully informed about what Randy is doing as our interim township manager.
Well, I'll, I'll comment to that. I personally don't support the weekly reports for Randy. I think we need to give Randy the opportunity to step into this role and continue communications in a way that, that he feels is best with this, this board. I don't feel that communications were bad to begin with, and to add that extra level of responsibility and onto him at this point, I think is not needed. So I don't necessarily believe that he should be doing weekly reports to the board. I think we need to give him the opportunity to figure out the best way to communicate with this board. I think he's already shown in, in the past day, how much information he passes back to the board on the larger student, upcoming issues and concerns. So give him that opportunity for those before we put any more additional reports on his plate. Not saying that he might not need some additional styles of reporting, but I think we need to give him a chance to get comfortable with this issue before we do that.
I think there's one thing I'd like to draw out from the previous request. Some commissioners we see a lot or entire communication about what's going on in the township, and some commissioners do not. The written report is a means to ensure that the full board is informed, that the full board is equally informed. That's the reason why there's a suggestion for a written report. Now, if we can do it through another means of communication so that all commissioners are all up to date with all the information, then that will move in the right direction.
I'm not sure exactly what you mean by some commissioner get more information or not. I mean, if you question us, right, and at least in my experience, in my time, I hope you can ask for that information. And quite frankly, I'm surprised you bring this up, and I consider you a man who wants to, at least not me, as far as feeling like not getting that information.
Well, as I stated, as I stated, we brought it up, I'm going to approximate six months ago all the reasons that I just gave prior to you coming to the board.
But I'm saying any conversations with the board, you know, to start that up, this way.
I think if you go back through all the meeting minutes, you'll find many instances where this has been part and parcel of the discussion of this.
No, I think about the five of us, we give them once, others do, in my attention, the commissioner say, oh, I don't have enough information. I mean, there's no other means to go about getting that other than saying, give us a weekly report. I mean, again, with I'm small for this summer, at some expense, you know, we're trying to meet that, but that's not common practice.
I just, I just said, if, if not a weekly report, then let's have all commissioners receive all information. That's what I said.
I, I don't see, I, I, I don't know where we're going with this conversation, but I, I don't see how you keep insinuating that some of us are getting more information than others. And I can assure you, in the past with Renee, if there was information that came in or questioned or was copied on it, I think, or nor do I know anybody else, got information and then it wasn't passed on to us.
I'm, I'm not going to repeat things that we said at this meeting in order to validate what I'm saying. So I suggest we move on.
Okay, so that.
My comment, my comment, I support Randy Coe entirely. My, my encouragement is to keep the full board informed.
That's my kind of thing, when we ran some files for it, it's just too much of that.
I, I think, I, if you put it in ten, I conceded that point like about five or 10 minutes ago.
I think he's just asking that everybody's informed of the same information that I said. Were there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have one other comment, and I happened to inform Randy about this before the meeting. We talked about this at the B O C, we talked about it probably two meetings ago. We have the Chapter 50 that states the township manager roles responsibly, and there was a Chapter 50.29 enacted last year, the subtle rules on commissioners. We're all well aware that we must contact Randy for all matters, and that we shall not give direction, and we shall not assign action orders without speaking to Randy first. But that ordinance also states that commissioners are allowed to ask staff questions, and the staff are allowed to answer questions. So I mentioned it to Randy before this meeting, I said, what's, what's your thoughts around this? Are you willing to agree with this ordinance and allow commissioners to ask questions and get answers? and allow commissioners to ask questions and get answers? So, my personal opinion on this is, I would love for you to start with me. Keep the open lines of communication, respect the chain of command. If I'm unable to provide that answer to the Board of Commissioners, I have no problem whatsoever getting our staff involved. But when it comes down to engaging them in additional work, that may require additional research, that's something I'll need to be aware of. Nobody likes surprises, nobody wants to get blindsided by another commissioner, another staff member, member of the media, or anything like that. So, all I ask is that I'm informed about the conversations with the staff members. I prefer we start with me, so I can be informed from the get-go. But other than that, I have no problem with the general question being asked, so.
I do have an objection to that, I think, the meeting. Sorry, I think we need a synchronized person that knows any more questions that are coming in, so that none of us, five of us, five of us is different people, and confusion, like, no, I can come up with it. So, I really believe that in this case, we should completely, uh, stay in order.
I think, Randy, you said it best. I think, I think if there's a question, a board member should come to you, and with that question. If you can't answer the question, it would go to a staff member that was an expert in that area. But you would certainly be in the loop on that particular question, because I agree, you know, once you start circumventing that, then information is being, you know, spilled out all over the place. One hand doesn't know what the other hand is doing, it becomes very confusing, so. And I think that's the best way to do things, and I think that's the intention of that ordinance.
And I do think the entire board should be informed of those conversations as well, and the outcome of those conversations, where everybody's on the same page.
For sure.
Well, that was back to my earlier.
Yep.
All commissioners will get all information about everything.
Yep, and that's always the intention.
That's true. We need to convert the intention into reality.
So, we'll continue status quo, wait until, I agree. All right, any other questions or comments? Any from the public? They are shot, please.
Oh, wait.
Would that be.
Wait, no, we got something in the chat.
We do?
Yes. Jacob Roth, 1499 White Oak Road. "I'm not sure if this was mentioned or not, but when will the process begin to find and interview candidates for a permanent township manager? Will it occur in the next four months or after the board reorganizes in January?"
We will touch on that question after this particular motion. All right, any other questions in the chat?
Nope.
All right, so, that being said, I personally would like to make a motion for, uh, to move forward with naming Randy Coe as our interim township manager, and increasing his base compensation for the interim township manager. So, a motion on the floor, Commissioner Walk, your second. And we have a second from Commissioner Kelly, and I will call Hope.
Commissioner Walk.
Aye.
Commissioner Long.
Yes.
Commissioner Seton. Commissioner Kelly. And Commissioner Morgan.
Yes, Randy, thank you very much for taking on this responsibility and role. We really do appreciate it.
And I appreciate the vote of confidence from the board. I'm excited to get to work. I feel comfortable moving into this role. I know I can get the job done, and I can't say nothing about our other dedicated staff members. Our professionals that we work with every day, we have a great team around us. I know they're going to support me, so, thank you, everybody.
Got it. You had a great mentor, that's for sure, Randy, so. All right. Next this evening, for considerations, possible action, we have a motion requesting.
What about the commission?
Oh, we had a question.
Well, yeah, you said you were going to.
Thank you, man. Next question. That was in the chat. So, the board has agreed we will start our search process. At this point, you know, the search process will start with determining where we're going to reach out for potential candidates. The timing on the search process, we don't know that at this point. It'll depend on where we're going to send out the request for, or not applications, but for resumes. So, we have some legwork to do first. We will keep the public informed of that process and the timing as we move forward. So, yes, the board has agreed to start the search process. And depending on the timing of that search process, if it continues into after the election, we would certainly consider including the newly affected, elected officials and affected by all of this in that process as well. All right. Okay, so, next on the agenda for consideration and possible action, we have a motion requesting permission to extend the towing contract for one year. Chief Dory, can you report out on this one, please?
I certainly will. Good evening, commissioners, to that. We are requesting permission to extend the above referenced contract for another one-year term with an increase in pricing of 25% above the original fee schedule. Stew's Tire Center and Yobin Towing have been requesting an increase in fees covering all the costs of fuel, wages, and vehicle maintenance. These companies have been providing the township with towing services for the last two years without an increase, therefore, we feel it is a justifiable request. And this is allowable for the two-year contract to allow a one-year extension with up to a 25% increase. So, I am in support of this, they have not changed the rates for many years. And as we all know, the inflation rate, price of fuel, has gone through the roof. And I believe we still have a method in place to ensure that our township residents and visitors that are having their vehicles towed by us are not gouged either. So, I believe it's a fair rate and reasonable, and both tow companies have done a fantastic job of this.
Thanks, man. Are there any questions or comments from the board on this particular request to extend the towing contract?
I have a question. Chief Dory, when does this contract expire? Is it currently at the end of the year?
I believe it's the end of the month, of September. Yes.
Those towing fees, Chief Dory, those towing expenses are being transferred to public collectives.
Yeah, correct, correct.
Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? Right. Come on up.
Right, I'm going to ask, why did this was knocked out as a new request for proposals with the new increase? When this current contract was approved, a commissioner asked why a previous tower had not been on the contract, and it was stated he wanted more money. Because the rate was kept the same from the last contract, which was either a two- or three-year contract, to this contract. And now we're mid-contract with the extension, and it's allowable. But, you know, I was wondering why the existing contract is being allowed to provide more money outside of requests for proposals, the proposal process. If there is an increase, I believe the entire towing contract should be done the previous, had it been done the previous two times with a request for proposals by qualified entities. I just think it's, I understand that the contract's up to the end of the month, and we might not have time, but, and in the follow-up on that question, will this be an all-new process in a year? And would the current rate that might be increased, or would be, you know? I know the market sets him, but I know the city around him is actually somewhere cheaper in some respects, but the city around him, I don't know that many places.
Yes.
The towers say, man.
City around him receives eight tons of money.
Correct.
Where we do not.
I just wondered why.
Yeah, honestly, the two-year contract serves us very well. You know, we could certainly put this back out at the RFP, and I can guarantee that our residents are going to pay a lot more for towing, quite frankly. Because both tow companies requested a much larger increase. Due to the fact that, I believe in the current climate, this protects our residents more than putting out for an RFP, and now having, instead of going from $175 per tow and going to a $218 fee, I would anticipate through an RFP process, you're going to see upwards of $300 for tow. I believe, as a township, we have a responsibility to our residents as well. And we actually had a conversation with both tow companies to make sure that it was written to them as well. It didn't meet quite the standards they would like to go to. However, they were okay with this increase that is pursuant to the contract, and were allowed to do that. And I believe it gives them the benefit that they were looking for to a point, but it also protects our residents as well, just so we don't go back out. And, you know, right now, the market for fuel goes through the roof, and then all of a sudden bids go back really high, and then maybe the market comes down later, and it flushes. So, it's, I think it's fair for everybody involved.
I remember, because I was sort of involved several years ago with the first contract I was ever, you know, because it used to be whoever, whoever was the partner, I would call. It wasn't that the towers set the rate, the township set the rate based on the market, and then if you wanted, if you wanted to bid at that rate, you know. So, is, will the township be setting the rate next time, or is it going to be?
I believe that is where we start, we put some guidance.
Last time I went to Whitehall Township, and see who, you know, just.
And based on our performance, though, due to the radius of being within the township, we are very limited.
Right.
And if we set the parameters too low, we may not get people to bid for the contract.
Right.
So, I think at this time, with the instability of the market, with the price of fuel, I believe this truly is the best option.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Any other questions from the public? Any in the chat?
Nothing in the chat.
Nothing. All right, that being said, I hear a motion to move forward with permission to extend the towing contract for one year. We have a motion on the floor, Commissioner Kelly, your second. Second from Commissioner Seton, and I will call him, please, Randy.
Commissioner Walk.
Aye.
Commissioner Long.
Yes.
Commissioner Seton. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you for doing that work and research, Chief Dory. All right. Next this evening, I think a lot of people are sitting in the back waiting for minutes to back them out, is a motion for consideration this evening to approve the tentative agreements reached between Southway Hill Township and the Southway Hill Township Police Bargaining Unit. This motion is also authorizing administration to pay the steps necessary for its implementation, including executing a consolidated collective bargaining agreement that incorporates the terms of the tentative agreement. Chief Dory.
Yes, I don't know how far in detail you'd like me to go. I was not part of the negotiations in this. However, Renee and the bargaining unit members negotiated over the period of several months, and in my opinion, they went back and forth, and the process worked. We did not incur, you know, expansive legal fees to do this. I think both parties came to the table with wants, needs, and reasonable demands and requests, and I think it came out favorable for all parties. I can tell you it is a five-year contract with a 3% general wage increase each year, starting January 1, '22, and going through January 1 of 2026, and ending on December 31st of 2026. I will say, a lot of the legwork that went into the last extension, contract extension, was done two years ago, which we made some substantial changes to the contract with a 12-hour shift, as well as a very substantial change in the sick time policy and allotment that the officers get, and it's been very beneficial to the township, and to the officers as well. There are some other quick clarifications in the contract. I know we've had executive session, and the board has been briefed pretty fully on that contract. So, I can answer any questions that may come up that I'm aware of. But I would also introduce Lieutenant Kleintop and Officer Sergeant Donner are here as well. They were part of the negotiation team with Sergeant Beaumont as well. So, if there's any questions, one of the three of us probably would be able to answer them.
Well, I just want to make a statement. I am just beyond impressed at how quickly these negotiations went through, and I think that speaks volumes for the department and the negotiating team, as well as the negotiating team, which included Renee for the township side. And for that, we are very grateful, and we're glad that you came to an amicable agreement. That's good for the township, and it's also good for all of you. We respect and appreciate everything each and every one of you do for us each and every day, and know how important this contract is to you. So, I'm glad we're here this evening to make this particular vote. So, that's my thoughts.
I also don't have any questions, but it'd be okay, I just wanted to make a few comments. Since being appointed as a commissioner here in Southway Hill Township this past spring, and since my term ends in December, I'm well aware of the fact that I will go down probably as the shortest-term commissioner in the history of Southway Hill Township, wherever it is you'd like. It's my sincere belief that it's not how long you do something, but what you do with the time that's going to entrust it to you. And so, my view is, I want to make a difference, be a part of something bigger than myself, and do what's right, both here in this role and in life. And I'm honored to play a small role, a very small role, in the support of our brave men moving in back and throughout this township in uniform, by supporting this contract. I also do want to thank those that were part of the team, including union representatives Eric Kleintop, Eric Donner, and Colin Beaumont, as well as now former township manager Renee Vickel. As a commissioner, I have complete confidence in management staff to negotiate a fair contract that made sense for all stakeholders, and my confidence in them was not disappointed, and I'm thrilled with the contract as presented. It benefits both the people in Southway Hill Township as well as our police officers. It's physically responsible, but most importantly, I think the contract puts our money where our mouth is in regards to supporting our brave men, women in uniform. That being said, I just wanted to take a moment to thank all the officers that are here in the back, those that are part of our force throughout the township. It should go without question that you're all our heroes. I don't owe that to patrons of you in any regard. And it should go also without question that you guys deserve our support. And I do want to make myself perfectly clear, just from a larger perspective, that as long as I have breath in my lungs, whether as a commissioner, private citizen, as a business owner, I will always continue to back the thin blue line. And rest assured that there are thousands of residents here in Southway Hill Township and throughout this great nation that have you back, that are rooting for you and praying for you each and every day as you build out your role. And under candiness, that you all matter, your role matters. And again, thank you so much for all that you do. And in conclusion of all that, just wanted to provide some encouragement. It's been a great encouragement to me in my life that comes from one of my favorite passages of scripture, John Joshua, Chapter 1, verse 9. It says, "Have I not commanded you to be strong and courageous? Do not be afraid, do not be discouraged; for the Lord your God will be with you." Bring it to go. So, thank you again to all of you, and God bless you.
Yes.
Very nice, man. I told you this.
Are there any other?
Thank you again to all the people making the call.
Questions or comments?
I have a shortcut. As your commissioner, and with all sincerity, you have my utmost trust and respect and unconditional support for everything that you do every single day. Honored to approve this contract, which my understanding is it means your satisfaction there for negotiation, so. I'm honored to approve this contract for all of you.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll make a comment as well. I'm going to thank Lieutenant Kleintop, Sergeant Donner, and Beaumont for negotiating on behalf of all of the officers. Thank you for the time that you gave to negotiate for the good of the entire unit. Thank you, really unsung and unknown a couple of times here in the township, but we know that you are always protecting and serving that stuff. Thank you for all that you do, day and night, for every member of our community. Thank you for that, and please be safe out there.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the public?
I've been in this knowledge for 54 years, and our police department does an excellent job, and we should be proud of them.
We are very.
Thank them so much. Thank them so much.
Any questions and comments in the chat?
Nothing in the chat.
Nothing in the chat. All right. That being said, I would like to start things off by making a motion to approve the tentative agreement with the police bargaining unit with the agreement that's in front of us this evening. So Commissioner Morgan makes a motion.
Aye.
We have a second on the floor from Commissioner Long. Can I have a roll call vote, please, Randy?
Commissioner Morgan. Aye. Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes. Congratulations and thank you again for all you do.
Thank you very much.
Don't get wet. Not there at all.
Feel free to say it. I'm not going to do it.
All right. Thanks for your patience, everyone. All right. This evening, we're going to try and move things along here as quick as possible. We're not getting any better out there. We do not have anything, I'll go through this, under fourth amendment, information items. I'll read through Wednesday, September 8th, we have 1:00 PM in Civil Service Commission meeting. On Thursday, September 9th, at 7:00 PM, we have an emergency management meeting. On Monday, September 13th, at 7:00 PM, we have a Public Safety Committee meeting. And on Monday, September 13th, at 7:00 PM, we have a Parks and Recreation meeting. We currently have a variety of vacancies on boards and commissions. One is civil service. We have one vacancy. It's an alternate position. Landscape Shaping and Tree Commission, we have two vacancies. Park and Recreation Board, two vacancies. Those are the Brooklyn School District positions. And then, and I know Randy is working on those particular positions as we speak. And then we also have one vacancy as an alternate on the zoning carrying board. Unless anybody has anything else to add on boards and commissions, we can keep things moving. It's quiet. That's good. We'll keep things moving. All right. We have nothing under direction and discussion items. However, under old business, Randy, I'll refer to you. Any updates on where is Dan?
Nothing to report on the same thing, Commissioner Morgan.
All right. Thank you, sir. And this would be the opportunity for courtesy of board. Is there anybody who would like courtesy of the board this evening? Brian? You're in between everybody and bringing thoughts.
First of all, congratulate Randy. He has always been very helpful to me in the issues I've been having with the development around my residence. He's, in fact, he emailed me this morning about the issues that I'm going to bring up. One at this moment, on May 24th, in that conference room over there, we had a meeting with my neighbors, the township, Black Creek Group, the owners of the warehouse development, Blue Rock Construction, the pit fat company, saying that the paving of that road would be done by mid-off. It's now September 1st and it doesn't look like anything is going to happen anytime soon. And as we get into fall, certain temperatures change and then nothing gets paved. So I just want to make the township aware that the condition of that road, now two of the buildings are leased and one's potentially leased, so all three are leased. Employees are moving in, contractors are moving in. The road is in very rough shape. The inlets drive out there today, and that's Randy. You'll see the stormwater just going around the inlets because they're all raised to three inches. My request, and I understand Herb's very busy right now, that if Black Creek Group didn't then pay the road, the township should pay it before winter hits. Because last winter, the township was breaking plows on these inlets or on the manhole covers. They busted one right in front of my house. The whole cutting edge of the plow just shattered. So it's now becoming a safety issue because you have employees that are unfamiliar with the road. And you have two inlets right in front of my house and an empty truck, a trailer goes down the road doing while in excess of 25 miles an hour, hits those, it's like boom, boom, all my home. So the road needs to get paved. It's been 18 months.
Hey, Brian. First and foremost, thank you so much for the kind words. Really appreciate that. I did email you if we are able to meet next week sometime, if you saw the email. Check your email again. I think it was Thursday, September 9th, 1:00 or something.
Okay.
I did speak with Herb a little bit about the paving today. And he informed me that I guess they had a delay in material arriving, some of the underdraining and things like that. But we're going to look into it a little bit deeper for you and hopefully watch some more better features for you coming up here next week.
All's I know is all their parking lots and driveways are beautifully paved. That's all.
I couldn't agree more. We got to get that road paved sooner rather than later. So thanks.
Thank you, Brian. It sounds like Herb and Randy are going to continue to be on that, hopefully.
They are two of the individuals in this township that have kept me sane. I appreciate that enough.
If you'll follow, Randy, would you just let the board know how that meeting goes? Let them know where the progress on the dating and that.
No problem. Let me make a note here.
Anybody else with courtesy at the floor?
Just want to let you know that that's still money.
It's in the security bond.
Yes. None of that money was released at this point.
All right. As always, know that our invoices and purchasing requisitions have been reviewed by our township manager and our director of finance. We do need a motion to move forward to authorize that our checks be issued to pay our bills that's tabulated. Do I hear that motion? A motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. For your second. Second from Commissioner Seton. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Morgan. Aye. Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton? Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes. Motion carries. We have no executive session and you need a motion to overturn it. A motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. For your second. I'll make a second. Second from Commissioner Morgan. All in favor?
Aye.